Good afternoon, calling to order the special meeting of the El Segundo City Council on Thursday, September 29th. Please stand and Councilmember Dugan is going to lead us in the pledge.
For me, I can join me. Let's lead this to the flag. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Firstack?
Here.
Councilmember Bran?
Present.
Councilmember Dugan?
Here.
Mayor Protemboyle?
Here.
And Mayor Fuentes?
Here. Now is the time for public communications, related to city business only. Five-minute limit per person, 30-minute total. How many people here would like to speak today? I see one, two, three, four, five. We're good. All right. Your turn.
Mayor, City Council, you all know me, but for the agenda, I will say Carol Atkinson, a 39-year resident of El Segundo. And I'm here today at the request of my husband, Dave Atkinson, former City Council member. I scheduled him a morning late appointment, and I said, not getting out of that, it's important you go. So he said, well, then you have to speak. I'm like, so here I am, first time I've ever spoken. And hopefully it'll be the last time, but anyway, let me get to the point. The Aquatics Center is something that Dave has been involved in quite some time, what, a couple of years at least? And now it's coming to fruition, and I know there are some issues that need to be resolved. A simple way to keep the Aquatics Center intact and moving forward is to break down into cost factors for each step, equipments, equipment as needed. Then put priorities on the needs, revenue and time schedules. For example, number one would be the large pool. Number two, the two bulkheads. And number three, the warm-up pool, to just name a few. Then I would like to mention something that Councilman Dugan had to say recently, as I watched a portion of the council meeting, when you were discussing the agenda, and there were so many items on there, and I was really impressed that some of the items were parked. And the park then parked the rest of the items, using his language, related to the time, the needs, and the revenue. This would enable all of us to raise the funds by breaking down the items separately, as the money is available. It's much easier to find support this way and raise the funding than attempting to sell the entire package as a whole. This process would also reach more groups to fund together, large and small amounts of money. We can also save between $100,000 and $200,000 by paying for certain items now to lock in the current pricing. This is a must. Lastly, the city has waited over 20 years for an Aquatics Center. No one wanted it near their homes, plus where and when? Something missing, but it's, anyway, we wouldn't be able to, the land worth would be over three-plus million to build a pool. This way of attacking the overall needed funding gives the City Council the right choice to go forward with the entire project. Foundation formed by Richard Lundquist, time to raise the money. This foundation is not just for us, but it's for many other projects in the South Bay that will need funding in the future. So spread the word, this is so important, it's not just El Segundo, but it's the entire South Bay and the future Olympians. Thank you.
Hello, Council. Nice to be here today. Introduce myself, my name is Lee Davis. I'm sure you all recognize me at one point or another, but just for prosperity's sake, we'll go through the few things that I've been involved in and my commitment over the years. I'm a 53-year resident, I've been a part of Pool Design Committee. I'm currently the chairperson of the Recreation and Parks Commission. I'm one of the five persons on the Foundation for South Bay Sports, Health and Recreation, which is chaired by Richard Lundquist, as you know. And obviously, I'm a long supporter of El Segundo Aquatics, aquatics as a whole. I'm with Henry, I've spent a lot of time as a swimmer in college, NC2A All-American, and also a captain at Long Beach State. So I've got a decent amount of aquatics background. First off, before we get into all the rest about the pool, I want to thank the Council very, very much for talking to D.R. Horton and getting together and proposing that they have a donation to the Aquatics Fund. I understand that that's coming, if it wasn't announced formally, it's coming soon. So thank you very much. It's a commitment towards the Aquatics Fund, as the South Bay Sports, Health and Recreation Foundation is committed to not only Aquatics Center, but other aquatics programs such as the Rosario Swim Stadium. As we go through the history of the pool, try to keep this brief, there's been a number of good ideas. Hilltop, the high school, Imperial, Richmond, and a number of others that didn't fare quite as well as those, but those were all good ideas. This project has the three major partners, City of El Segundo, Wiseburn School District, and South Bay Sports, Health and Recreation, that's committed to raising funds to see this project through. Wiseburn High School is committed to see this project through. The pool currently includes 10-lane, two 10-lane pools with 25 years each for both of our high schools to get in, train together, and more importantly, get out together. This opens up time for programming, so that we can help offset the revenue. Part of the pool committee, that's why we went with the upgraded design, was so that we could truly get more bang-for-the-buck each and every day out of this pool. The other thing is a four-lane training pool. That's going to be a warm-water pool, it's set up, we already have an orthopedics group that's just rented space in Elavon, asking about that pool because they're renting space down in Redondo. For them to be at Elavon and be able to have just a couple blocks away their actual training facility for water, you know, hip replacements, knee replacements, we have revenue on the board for a lot of the stuff that's in this program that was set up 15 months ago and approved. It's got control access points throughout, so that we know who's coming in and out of the building. It's got 110 parking spots, which if you think about each one of the previous projects, was because there was either not enough parking, or there was too much parking. This has 110 with no objection to who's parking there, as long as they're using the aquatics complex. In events, we get to schedule the complex. We've got another 400 spots, I think it's 390 spots, from the high school to use for events, bringing people into our hotels. And as you know, Measure B brings, we use the hotels, we get part of the hotels, so that's revenue in that. This complex serves more than just a few water polo players, more than just a few master swimmers, it will serve the whole community, businesses and the like. So, on March 15th, 2015, March 3rd, 2015, the El Segundo City Council approved the upgraded pool design, and would commit the $1.8 million from the trust account, and I quote, "with the understanding these funds will be paid back in full." South Bay Sports, Health and Recreation is made, has made a commitment to pay back and continue raising funds for numerous projects, not only the aquatics complex, the plunges number two, number two was the soccer fields. Thank you very much for funding the soccer fields. It now is the number-two priority for the South Bay Sports, Health and Recreation District. Both you, the Council, with both you, the Council, the South Bay Sports, Health and Recreation, with the help of Richard Lundquist, we're committed to the goal of compete, of a complete aquatics program for El Segundo. This is not just a good idea, but this is a great idea. If the City of El Segundo is truly committed to having great ideas take off, which I've heard before, please take this great idea and let it take off, and keep your commitment to spending the aquatics fund for the aquatics complex. Thank you very much.
Afternoon, not evening. Council, Ron Swanson. My quest towards a new pool or aquatics complex go back to 1997, and we were still coaching. Sat on numerous aquatics task force, many hours researching where we'd best place it in this city. We all know Hilltop was a spot, the high school was a spot, Richmond Street was a spot. The problem is, every time we went there, the objection was, not in my neighborhood. We have the perfect venue to develop over on the other side. It worked for the athletic fields, it will work for this. I have a problem where it says reducing project scope and costs, it's always good to look. I also have a problem with, quote, "as long as the $1.8 million is paid back." None of you were involved, maybe one. I was personally involved with one of the half-a-million-dollar donations, and the word was, "donation to a new pool." I know that the discussion with the other 1.5 million was, "donation to a new pool." So the way I look at it, you're asking for donated money to be brought back here for something else. I know that Richard and the, and the, his organization, organization has committed to helping with the plunge refurbish, but really, I mean, if you're going to put in, let's just say you're going to, we have $1.8 million, if you're going to put in $3 million, you're really only putting in 1.2. That one point, that $2 million was donated money, and that block froze for some reason. Is that the right? Oh, it's over there, sorry. It's fundamentally wrong, just knowing that, I know that it was towards a new pool, and for to have it, say, we need to have that money back, it's just, if I make a donation, I give it to something, I expect it to go to that something, not with strings that, oh, we don't use there, we're going to bring it back and use it elsewhere. It wasn't for the refurbishment of the plunge, it was for a new pool facility. We have a golden opportunity here, where you have a landowner giving us the property to put the pool on, throwing in $6 million. We have our money to put into it, and then you've got the, Richard and his group willing to raise the rest. So we need to move forward this. It's been way too many years that I've worked on this, and to be honest with you, if this doesn't happen this time, I don't think I'll ever see it in this community. I'll never, I'll never see one. This is the golden goose that laid the golden egg. We need to be able to put it over there, fund the right part, and build it the appropriate way. Put the money into it now, by reducing the deck size and reducing the scope, saves you construction costs, but it's going to cost you in the operation, the net of the operation, because you can't regain any of that revenue from, say, the ortho groups and people like that that want to go in there and use it off hours. So I would encourage you to look at the best scenario, listen to the experts, and make this deal happen. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to ask everyone to refrain from clapping or commenting. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Stephen Winkler. My son, it's been water polo, swimming, junior guard for nine years now. So for nine years, I've been going to pools all over Southern California, and one thing I have learned is, most of the pools are not really well-designed. You know, they're not made for multiple organizations to be able to use a pool at one time. This pool with the two bulkheads allows El Segundo to do that. You could rent out one half for water polo, swimming, and have the other side for recreation free swim. So you could, you know, you get the benefit by reducing the size, reducing the deck space, you're going to limit, really limit that, and I think that's one of the things that we need to make sure we don't, you know, shortfall us on the whole thing. When, you know, gone off script so badly so far. Right now in Southern California, I mean, real locally, there is no real good pools around to rent. You got, in Orange County, some of the water polo teams, they're practicing five and six nights a week for each age group. Down in here in, out in the South Bay, we have two club teams, water polo, they're having to put multiple age groups together, and then only, those teams are only getting three nights a week. It really puts a handicap on our kids to be competitive with other kids in Southern California. This pool would allow us, at the current configuration, be able to run, you know, Olympic-type events, which you can't do anywhere else. There's no rented pool available in Southern California, close by here, to be able to do such an event. And with the two bulkheads, again, it allows you to split up and be able to run two events at the same time. And with the warm-up pool, you know, the other revenue there, I think we really should look at, you know, not necessarily trying to save money right now, but look at, what can it generate? When I grew up, up in Chicago, what a lot of times we would do, and a lot of families would do, they would go to the pools Sunday afternoon for their rec swim time, free swim. That's something we could have here. I know there's people who don't want to go down to the beach because the sand and the waves, they prefer a large outdoor pool, but we don't have anything like that in El Segundo. We have two shallow pools, which are closed except for during the summer, and the plunge is not really a place where you can really go and swim and spend time with the family conveniently, because it is indoors and, you know, it needs a lot of renovation. And then the other aspect is, if we don't do this pool now, and something happens with the plunge, which we know it, you know, it has happened in the past, we're going to deprive our high schoolers and the community of a pool usage while we're trying to get the plunge back up and running. Thank you.
I just want to make a couple key points, and maybe they've already been heard, but as the high school water polo coach?
I was going to say, identify yourself.
I'm Riley Brady. I'm the head coach of the high school boys and girls water polo teams, and I've been a resident in El Segundo from birth. So I've got a vested interest in seeing that we build, not just a pool, but a pool that in 25 years, we're not going to look back and go, God, I wish we would have just made it this way or that way. I go to all the other pools in the South Bay, virtually all the teams we compete against have their own pool, or, and almost all of the pools that have even recently been built, they all say the same thing, I wish we would have done this, or I wish we would have had that. And I think if we build the pool the right way, in 50 years, 25 years, we absolutely will not have that, that issue. And I think that's one important thing. In 20 years, will we look back and say, I wish we would have invested more? And my second point I want to make is, this is not a pool for, that only our high school kids will be benefiting from. That is a teeny-tiny fraction of the people that will benefit from this pool. Sure, the high school kids are going to have a huge benefit, and the numbers of the kids you see in here, if we did the same thing in five years, 10 years, would probably be triple that. So the positive impact will be not only on the high school kids, but it'll be on the community as a whole. And I think, as Mr. Swanson said, the time is now, and the opportunity is the golden opportunity, I can't see us move forward and wish we would have done something more. Thanks.
Any more public communications?
Chris Castigar, I'm a resident of El Segundo for the last 12 years, but my family's been in the city for the last probably 40 years. They used to own the Village Drug on Center and Mariposa. I'm completely in support of this pool, both my boys are twins, they play water polo on the team, and I've been around different pools throughout the Southland, South Bay, Northern California, and I've seen the pool systems that are out there, and I know the South Bay and this area is desperately dying for a good system. I know the plunge, we had a pool project that was happening in like, I think it was 2004, 2006, that got shut down. This is an opportunity for you guys to look at the situations, that we've had opportunities to bring an amazing pool program into the, into the community, and it's been shot down, and I think this is an opportunity for you to really stand up against, or stand for something that could benefit the community as a whole, as well as the surrounding communities. I think this is a good opportunity to do that.
Any more comments?
Found out about this at last minute, but I, I'm going to stand up. My name is Evelyn Cole, El Segundo resident, and I want to stand up for swim teams. We've been talking a lot about water polo teams, and that's all great. I have two kids that are swimming in a club team. We started out, out of the El Segundo plunge, we were disappointed both in the reliability of the plunge and what it could offer, as well as the club that was running it there. We are now at a different club in Culver City, and what I want to say also is that not only can El Segundo benefit, but if you go to other pools in the area, the amount of revenue, the amount at Culver City Pool, for example, while we are there with our club, there are at least three other clubs renting lanes. There is water polo, there is aquatics exercise, there is, the amount of revenue that we can get from a good-sized pool is tremendous. It's not just for El Segundo. You don't have to say, we're going to give it to one club, or this, you can rent out lanes, you can make money that's going to benefit us long-term. I think what is mentioned also was the fact that this would be the only Olympic-sized pool in South Bay. There is a shortage of pools. If you look around, clubs are always looking for pools, they're always looking for lanes, they're fighting for lane times. We have kids swimming until 8:30 at night, 8:30, 9 o'clock at night, because they can't get in and get enough lanes earlier. So as far as revenue, it, long-term, it would be a tremendous opportunity for El Segundo. Thank you.
Any more comments? No, nobody in the back? Okay, there's plenty of seats in front. So I am going to close public communication, but I want to point out for anybody who's watching this on television and can't see, we probably have 30 students here from the high school, I'm guessing, so it's really wonderful. I don't think we've seen this many young people here in a long time unless they had an assignment, so. And that, it could be your assignment to be here, but...
Or, does Romo know you're here, is the next question, right?
You're going to see your local government at work, and again, if you want to talk, this is the time that you get to talk, although I did disclose public communications, and I'm going to be like Mayor Protem, and take your picture, to prove to everybody that you were here. There's lots of seats in front, I see eight or nine seats up here if you want to come sit down, there's a couple seats in the audience. Thank you for showing up. Pardon? Oh, you're not going to be able to see the PowerPoint presentation if you're in that corner, so the city manager's saying you might want to switch corners or come along the wall, or come sit up front. All right, so I imagine that Council's going to save their comments until we open the item, or did you have something you wanted to say, sir?
So a little background, the last time I talked on this topic was towards the end of 2011, during my first term on the board. And that evening, I proposed that a pool, which was needed by the city and the school district here due to the condition of the plunge, be the bridge between the new Wiseburn High School and the City of El Segundo, instead of a pile of legal bills. At that time, despite the advice from Mark Henze, the our city attorney, that it was unnecessary for me to recuse myself, I did recuse myself, and didn't talk about the matter again here on the dais until today. Now I have a new term here, sworn in on May the 3rd, four years-plus has passed, and I went to Mr. Henze again to see if anything had changed in his recommendation or advice to me about participation in this transaction. It hasn't, he still maintains that there's no legal reason for me to withdraw or accuse myself from the item, and since I have such a background of information around this issue from beginning up through today, I've decided to take a different course this time and to participate in the discussion and the vote around this item. So I just wanted to clarify to everybody that this was going to be a change for me four and a half years later, and I'm going to be a player and a voter in this. Thank you.
And would you explain why you recused yourself before, because some people might not know your background?
Yeah, so my background is... Yeah, so my background is I have a 63-year relationship with the Weisburn School District from dating back to 1953 when I enrolled there as a third grader. And in 1993, I returned to the district to be the superintendent of schools, a post that I held for 15 years. And during my last year as superintendent of Weisburn, I led the formation of the independent charter high schools known as Da Vinci High Schools that will be based here in El Segundo beginning next summer. So I've been on all parts of this. I started my career as a teacher here in El Segundo Unified at Center Street. I founded Da Vinci, a superintendent and a lifetime member of the Weisburn School District family, and second round here on the council. So I decided in 2011, for going into 2012, the council's number-one goal here was to block the possibility of Weisburn High School being located in this city. And that was not something I ascribed to for obvious reasons, and also something I knew that the council couldn't prevail on, given the powers of a public school district's arms of the state. So at that time, I figured, you know, there's nothing I could do or I wasn't going to lose. And so I stood down on that, and of course, as time went on, the high school or the Weisburn found their site and has moved forward with it. And indeed, my suggestion in late 2011 to use this pool as a bridge to peacefully resolve the dispute between the city and the school district, which by the way, that boundary between the districts is Sepulveda Boulevard, and it has been since 1912. Okay? A lot of people didn't understand that when I talked about it for 15 years, but now more people understand that because of the construction of Weisburn High School. So that's the background, and I just feel like sometimes when you recuse yourself, the person who knows the most about the issues doesn't participate, and everybody loses around that. I haven't worked for Weisburn for over eight years now, and I think this project is extremely important to so many that I don't want to miss the opportunity to do what I can to push it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we begin?
A quick one. I just want to commend Riley Brady, having seen you as a young lad. Mike, I'm sure he's super proud and having your sister babysit my older boys. You're a great role model to these youth. Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business. Item number one, consideration and possible action related to the design and construction of the new Aquatic Center at Weisburn High School. Fiscal impact to be determined not to exceed $1,800,000. City manager?
Mayor, members of council, just to provide a little bit of an introduction and background, we deal with lots of issues, lots of public issues and public problems, and I see this as a good problem. It's a problem nonetheless that we need to discuss and resolve. We started this process with obviously a smaller facility, we decided to go with a larger facility. The city team, the Weisburn team, and stakeholders got together and put together a list and a conceptual project that included all the elements that we thought made up a first-class facility. And then we got into the design phase, and at your last council meeting on this topic, we told you what that ideal project would cost. And the problem that we're now dealing with is that ideal project exceeds our available budget. We have, talking about the budget, we have $6 million that Weisburn is committing to the project. We have a very generous commitment from the fundraising group for another $6 million. The city, in our agreement with Weisburn, has the option to commit our aquatics fund, which is at $1.8 million. So even if the city makes the full commitment of the 1.8, that gives us the $13.8 million. And then the ideal project that we showed you several weeks ago was coming in closer to $15 million. So the discussion today is really about how to solve for that gap. We have, we have a gap in the project funding either way, even if the city commits the entire 1.8. So I think the decisions for the council today are, do you, do you want to and are you willing to commit the full 1.8 million? And even at that point, what other elements of the project need to be reduced or delayed? So we've, staff has been working with the subcommittee on this, and we have some recommendations on options to reduce the project budget. The agreement between us and Weisburn contemplated that this could happen and indicates that if the project budget, if this project exceeds the project budget, that the two parties will work together to reduce it. So this is really the first step in that process. So the city would decide what it wants to reduce the budget to and the scope to, and then we'd go meet with Weisburn and come to an agreement on that reduced project scope. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Meredith Pettitt, our Director of Recreation and Parks.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, city council. We will begin the presentation here in one minute. I just wanted to make a mention to the comment on reducing project scope. I think reviewing the project scope and cost is probably a better term to use here because I think that this process has actually been good over the last two or three weeks to really dive in even deeper in detail than we had previously done so. And the options that'll be presented tonight, I think are really good options to consider and could even potentially make the project even better. So with that, we do have our consultant, Stu Isaac, here to provide the presentation. And also in the audience are a lot of the architects and designers from the project team, as well as Weisburn administrators. So as we move through and towards the end of the presentation for questions and discussion, we do have some other experts in the room tonight to answer some questions.
I'll work from the podium also. Thank you. Could be back in front of the council. Sorry to turn my back on all the supporters of the project and great to see so many of our water polo enthusiasts, and great to hear so many comments about it. During this process, many of the people that actually spoke, I've had a chance to engage, going back to the initial feasibility study that was begun two years ago. So a lot of this input, both then and now, has been taken into account. I'd like to thank the members that were on the swim committee meeting yesterday, which helped clarify some of the questions. So let's dive into what has really transpired in the research done since I was last here a couple of weeks ago, and also some of the questions that came up yesterday and some of the information and detail we've been looking for. Started to get even a little bit more information today, so I may even have a couple tweaks and updates. So if you take a look, our goals today are to provide some of the answers, particularly on design details, access points, and flow of the design to make sure we really are meeting the needs of all its stakeholders. We're also trying to really take a look and determine the overall budget. And that's something I know Meredith will talk about, and certainly you mentioned the 13.8 is really a target, depending on how we refund the 1.8 million from the fund. But then take a look at really what the options are to reduce some of that capital cost, particularly looking at a wide variety of options and scenarios that really try to focus on having the least impact on programming, revenue ability to generate, and any increases or decreases in operating costs. So these are very important to take a look, and that's why I broke it out into a lot of scenarios so that we could deal with them one at a time, and see how cumulatively, as we prioritize these options and scenarios, they play out. And then we talk about next steps. So... One of the questions that came up that was a little confusing when we looked at the diagrams at the last meeting and with the swim committee meetings was that, just understanding the access points of the facility. And if you look, you see the layout of the pool, and you see the gym on the left, which is actually, if you look at this, the far right of the picture is actually north. And then the gym is in the, thank you. And so this is the gym space, locker rooms. The pool access gate in this corner, that is the pool control office, pool office as well as access control. It doubles as the ticket area for swim meets or water polo tournaments, and it controls the traffic from what's called city parking, which is really the pool parking. From there, if you look at the southwest corner, this access gate is for the gym, right here. That's their ticket window for traffic coming into the school. We have this access gate here because when spectators come in here, this is where the seating is. So we do flow traffic here, and this is our, for events, emergency exit. This is really event use only, the daily control up here. I wanted to share that so you could really understand that indeed, that access control in conjunction with the office of the pool is in the designs. And that was, I know, a topic of discussion that came up in our last meetings here. So now, this is some design detail that again, addresses those issues. This is that design that you saw up in this corner of the building. I want you to understand that we do have that laid out as part of this space within the building, which provides offices to support, access, control, lifeguard office, and that is staffed, and it's also the shift area for lifeguards. So this is, gives us an opening here, well as doors and windows to really control that access. That's already costed in, so that's not a separate issue. One of the important things that comes up that I felt needed some more clarification was a little bit of confusion about what spaces were included in the city scope of the project of the gym complex and what were included in the high school scope. We had a diagram that really decided, that showed that by, here, the color code. Blue was what the school, was what the pool scope was, so this was city project. And then these other areas were gym projects. And we wanted to make sure we understood what was on each side because that would become relevant when we're talking about shared use for events. So in the city scope, and this is the first time we actually have the detail of the schematics, the breakdown of the square footage. In the city scope, part of what the city is paying for as part of this is a men's locker room, a women's locker room, a family restroom, the pool office and access control, a concession area, janitor's closet, the office, and some office storage. So this was that 2,500-plus square footage that was indicated on the drawing that we just showed you. I wanted to stress that this family restroom is the one that's in this main building. There are also a couple restrooms attached to the mechanical building that are actually on the pool deck and not part of the gym complex. Wanted to see, because I think we've overlooked this, what are the, what's the school scope relevant to this space? Because this is where we see opportunities for some of the overlap for having large events, things we would need to support this. This is the first level, and they have also just changing, small changing rooms and bathrooms for people to change. Usually, they have really no need for the extra locker rooms, they're accounted for elsewhere within the school. And then they have men's and women's restrooms, which actually open to the gym and the pool. They have openings as kind of a pass-through from each side of the gym. They have their gym storage, elevators, and all the other basic stuff, plus their own ticketing window, and plus stairs and the lobby for the gym. It's important to look at the second level because often we don't pay much attention to that. But that's where we're getting this multipurpose room, which can be utilized in a shared space. Again, not part of the scope of the project or the funding from the school, from the city's side. So we have the multipurpose room, the restroom's up there, athletic director's office, coaches' office for the high school, and then all the elements needed to support that, circulation, lobby. I just wanted you to get a sense of the different elements and how they break down because I think the diagram with just the blue or the unshaded area was not quite enough to really give you the sense of the detail of the different spaces. This, as our city manager has mentioned, is the funds that were identified as being available. So the heart and soul of this was what do we do to get down to that 13.8 or even lower? And trying to prioritize things that don't impact our revenue possibilities, don't impact program, access, the availability of space, that don't delay the project, and within that, or don't incur additional design costs? Or within that, create something that forces us to even delay it further? Or are there ways we can phase some things without delaying the full project? All things we tried to take into account. And during this process, not only do we have input from the swimming committee, but we've had input from many of the stakeholders, many of the people that spoke today. I also had the chance to attend the USA Swimming Convention, National Convention, and US Masters Conventions last week, where I had a chance to talk to many of the stakeholders in Southern California and to address some of the comments Evelyn made. Have a chance to speak to many of the coaches in this area, and the goal truly is to bring in, have the opportunity for multiple teams to rent space that's available. So it's not just our existing structure. And there clearly is, even more than two years ago, significant pent-up demand, both for masters, for water polo, and of course, for the swimming, as you mentioned. Thank you for those comments. So I've addressed these in five different options or scenarios. And then I've tried to add, as we go, kind of keep a cumulative tab of what that's doing to the overall project. Just understand how we did this. You'll see some line, what I call line item costs, of what something may actually cost. Then in the process, we take it out of the overall worksheet on the funding, on the costing of it. Because when we take it out above the line, it also removes the contingencies, the add-on soft costs, incremental costs. So what we'll finally deal with on the bottom line are the actual total savings when you factor in the soft costs, contingencies, inflation, all the other factors. So the first thing, we tried to eliminate, tried to identify all the things that had no impact on design, no delay, and no, shall I say, hidden costs, no costs, no impact whatsoever on programming or revenue or the operating costs. Pretty simple, because one was in discussions with the school district, eliminating one of the items for administrative support from the school district on the project that was in the soft costs. Another was identifying the remote storage area, knowing that we had a pretty high number in there per square foot for just a bare-bones, cinder block structure that, no, we can size down in terms of cost. We also took about 50 square feet out of it, the way the architect put it into the location, went from 700 to 650. We also took a look at the pool scope because we really were able to quantify with more research where there are things in the pool scope. So that, the pool scope is the contractor's advisory bid that was used in the pricing for all the things that would be included and what the pool contractor would do. There was some overlap that overlapped with what we were getting purchasing direct from Mertha Pools and some of the equipment that was already priced elsewhere. So this was just an elimination of duplicate costs was one element of this. We removed the two 1-meter diving boards. Right now, there has really been no interest in any diving program. We've not factored that into the operational costs, and they're really from the school districts, both El Segundo and Weisburn, there's really been no interest in diving. We took a look at what, in terms of purchasing equipment directly, that can be the timing system, that can be lane line, that can be the thermal blanket. I think you all have a handout with much more detail on that. But these all come out of the pool contractor's scope and take it out of that above-the-line cost that has all those additional soft costs added to it. And these are all things that can be very easily purchased. None of these elements that were moved to the purchase require any significant operations or construction elements, so it really can be a very clean situation, and it's been done in many other projects like this. And again, some of the other things that weren't in the pool scope but were additional, tip-and-roll bleachers, scoring table riser, all things that can be added later, as can the training blocks we had on the side of the pool that weren't used for competition. We also eliminated the UV, the ultraviolet disinfecting system, not required by code. This was just on the teaching pool. It, the UV system helped kill Cryptosporidium and some of the other elements, some of the other biologics that could cause illness. It's not required by code, it is something that outdoor water parks are now required to have, and it's something that could be added very easily at a later date. It requires the, the teaching pool, if you wanted to install the system, probably to be down for a day and a half. Nothing really big. And again, that might be a $45,000 savings if you look at the line item. So we added all this up, and this came out to a total savings of over half a million dollars. This got us to 14.1 million. So that was the first step with very little impact, and certainly virtually no impact on the, all spoken supportive. But then we get to the concessions. But then we get to the concession stand. This was a little bit problematic because we were having a lot of issues and some of these are still ongoing on with the, with Weisburn and with architect to really explore what we can do. Because the code, the health department codes have become stricter and stricter. And the opportunity to provide a basic, not a full commercial kitchen, but just a very basic concession stand, usually run by a booster club to support events in the pool, became, was becoming more and more problematic and expensive. So what we did was say, well, we, since yesterday, I had a chance to fine tune with the stakeholders a little bit and I think I overestimated. So I brought this down to 300,000 in savings. One, because the space was not as big as we thought. The space in the concession stand set aside is 315 square feet. What we're looking at is can we create something where we have a, as the swim committee suggested yesterday, just big garage doors that open, it can double as some added storage. The booster club or the host can bring in tables and they can run concessions out of there. But it's not a city function. The city recreation and parks department is not set up really to run this. We factored in some revenue for the cost, for the annual revenue that might be generated from concessions. It would be a max of $40,000 a year net. But we're going to get a big chunk of that, maybe even more of this, back from other vendors that just bring food trucks or something and we're just renting them the space. So there are opportunities to gain back some of that lost revenue. This gets us another total savings with all the soft costs added in of 419,000. Now, there may be some, it depends on how we reconfigure that space to take over some of the other costs from storage. This is still up in the air and is going to require some more work with the architects, which we hope to do immediately following this meeting. So we know we have some savings, but that was one of the most expensive per square foot areas of that whole gym addition. So now we're getting down, that alone, that option would raise it to, lower it to 14.2. But now cumulative, we're in that 13.6 range with the chance it might be a little higher if we add some things back in. I jumped to option four because I wanted to do it in this order because I'm prioritizing how the swim committee yesterday approached the priorities of these reductions. So option four was reducing the size of the shallow water L in the main pool. Now, for those of you, if you think back to the drawings, the shallow water L pool has a ramp and steps that go down into about three and a half feet of water at the bottom of the steps and slopes toward the edge of the main pool, which is six feet. And then that, main pool then deepens quickly to the full seven feet. What's important to note is that there is no real organized programming plan for that. That was area to provide for just recreation, general use of the pool, easy in and out access to the main pool. It's required to make sure we have the multiple use aspect of the big pool, to have some shallow water in the big pool. And we didn't want to have any shallow water in the competition course. So we maximize the event capabilities and the water polo capabilities and maximize that space. But that's why the L is there in the first place. What we can do with that is still, we can remove the ramp, which is a very expensive. But we can add a lift or a handicapped elevator at a lower cost, which is factored into the total savings. We still have the stairs. We can create four additional cross-pool training lanes in the big pool because we don't have as big a bump out for the L. The square footage of the L goes from 1,500 square feet down to 440 square feet. So it's a significant decrease in the total space. The new L would measure 21 by 21 feet compared to the old L, which was 28 by 56 or, you know, something like that, it was 1,500 square feet. No negative impact on revenue because nothing was really driven by that. And it really has no impact on the training or the competitive purposes or uses of the pool. Very slight savings in cost. The volume of water in that space is such a small percentage of the overall. We might save $1,000 a year, 1,500, so that's not really a factor. One of the important factors is the special needs, seniors, handicapped access. Because it was great to have a ramp. It's always great to have that. It's the single most usable factor, but it's expensive and it takes a lot of space. The ramp itself takes for this kind of depth about 250 square feet. We already have a ramp in the shallow pool, which, and remember that teaching pool is warmer water, which is really what you'll see for almost all the special needs, the handicap use. So we felt that eliminating the ramp did not significantly negatively impact the overall ability for this facility to meet the needs of special needs, handicap, seniors, or other people that might need that ramp. And the stairs is actually a very easy way for swimmers or lap swimmers or people using the big pool to exit the pool. Downside is that in doing this, it changes the volume and requires essentially an entire redesign of the engineering drawings for the whole main pool. That ultimately created an added A and E, architecture and design, engineering design cost of $137,000. This number was provided for us by our aquatic engineer, Arch Pack. So I feel pretty comfortable with this number. I confirmed it with him this morning. So although there's a lot of savings up here in hard cost, we give back some of this. So the total savings at the bottom line, 206,000, which gives us now down to, if that was the only change we made, 14.4, but cumulatively, we're now at 13.5. Five, because that gives us that little buffer for some more build out of the concession area. So we're making progress toward that goal.
Also, Stu, do you want to mention about the additional seating?
Yes, and I've actually had some follow-up. Yesterday, based on the discussions, we had the opportunity, if we shortened the L, that we could add, because we added some deck space, we could move the pool a little bit more or remember the top of the photos, so the, the west side, we could probably add some more seating. One of the concerns of the pool at this point is that we have a great space. We have 10 lanes, we have double courses. We can accommodate very large meets, very large water polo tournaments. We didn't have the seating that matched up to it. One of the things that we like, if we move this, we have more space on that side leading up to the parking lot and the edge of the city space, that we could add some more seating. Since then, this morning, I followed up with Ken Muller because he actually just got some feedback from DSA earlier this week that he hadn't shared until this morning. And the only issue with DSA on all the designs was how the seating was constructed and the risers on some of the steps and the ramp access. So we know, okay, we've got to rethink seating a little bit anyway. Right now, the seating in that east side of the pool is raised just about five feet off the deck of the pool. It's a platform with handicap ramps going up. We have a little bit of ability to reconfigure where those ramp stars and if we take out the diving boards. But the issue is, we're getting some pushback and there's got a lot of spaces and you can only do so much when you're raised like that. We figured out that if we lower this, eliminate that platform and just have the seating, because the seating is just bleachers, it's just a raised platform with bleachers. If we do what most pools do and just lower that back down and we have enough deck space deck, we can maintain good sight lines. We eliminate the need for those ramps, we create more room for seating. And so since yesterday, we figured out that we could probably add two rows of seats without some of the breaks and without needing the ramps. Because if we have handicapped access seating right in the deck, that meets all our code requirements. So if we eliminate that riser, we're able to increase by 200 the seating. So we're up over the 500, 550, 600. And to be honest, it may end up to be no net cost to us because the cost of the riser is reduced. We don't have to do the ramps. And the cost of two extra rows of those kind of aluminum or bleachers that were being installed there, maybe will eat some of those savings up, but we may even come out ahead. So we thought this was, again, something new that came up even after we did this. So I was going to talk about seating later, but thanks for bringing it up in this context. Because it may not even be, the ability to add seating may not be contingent anymore on eliminating the L, which is a, again, we have more options. The ability to have the seating of over 500 with, balances the seating capacity with the capacity for competitors and teams in the pool. So we have a much better opportunity to get some of the bigger events that we were a little out of balance on in the initial design. Again, this gives you an idea of what the current L looks like. It has the ramp, it has steps, then we've got the pool deck and the seating is over here. Although this design I'm about to show you isn't from this pool. We were trying not to incur any new design costs just to create some options for this meeting. So this is another 50-meter pool in Southern California, which is very similar. Got the water polo setups, it's got the diving boards where we have over, over here. And this is what, in respect, a smaller L would look like. It would still have steps, it would still slope down to the deep water here. But just to give you an idea, it's still there, it's just downsized and it really has no impact on the programming. Then we raised the issue of another question that came up in the last meeting. And that was the use of code generation. Code generation, of course, for those that aren't really aware of what it is, is really an engine that drives a generator that takes natural gas and converts that through this engine into electrical power and hot water. You can use the hot water to, in a heat exchanger, help heat the pool. Though you cannot generate enough to heat the whole pool. You can generate maybe 30 to 40% of your needs. But it also generates electricity, which can alleviate your overall cost of energy for the pool. Whoops. The overall cost of that right now is 300, which when you add all the soft costs is 419,000. The engineering study came back after our last meeting and it generates savings in energy of about $36,000 per year initially. Now, that may go up depending on the, how the energy costs go. But there may be future technology also. But in looking at this, we realized that that kind of 11 or more year return, a time cycle to return on this investment of 419, there may be other options. And what we really wanted to do was consider three other options. The opportunity to utilize solar that the school district may be installing to drive the whole building, that could also provide some electricity for us. The option to have our own standalone solar system that would generate electricity, as well as the opportunity to use passive solar heating to heat the water. Many people have looked at these since our meeting yesterday. I have identified some of the leading engineers who have done these systems in California, as well as probably five or six different examples that show us how each of these have been used. Facility that uses code gen, facility that's piggybacking with the city, with the school district rather. So we're going to, over the next week or so, really drill down and get more of those facts. I know we considered solar in the study two years ago and ruled it out as not effective. But I think as the swim committee pointed out yesterday, it's worth going back and revisiting that for a couple reasons. One, is there a legitimate return on investment that could save us long-term operating costs? And two, is that a good return on investment? But also, I think it's important that we take a look, and I think this has been reiterated by members of the council on the swim committee and by the council as a whole, that we make sure that we're really doing our due diligence as a city to determine environmentally sound practices and efficient energy conservation. Keep in mind that every one of the engineering elements, whether it's the filter systems, whether it's the variable frequency drives, have all been, the heaters chosen, have all been chosen with regard to what is really the most energy efficient technology in the market today as it is available. So that would save 419,000. If that was the only change, we'd be down to 14.2. But if we added this on the three previous ones, we're now down to 13 million. And then finally, this one that was option five, narrowing the main pool from 25 meters wide to 25 yards wide. This really creates several different scenarios. It reduces our event capacity just mathematically by 10 to 15%. But what really it does is it makes it less attractive to host some of the bigger events. So there's some events you may not get at all, some you just wouldn't be able to have as many polo teams, really as many swimmers. That will impact swimming more than polo in terms of the spaces. Where it does impact polo is really the shortening of that 25-meter width wise course, which you can have some much better training conditions, where you can have more 25-meter courses involved, knowing that the width wise course is slightly less than your 25-meter legal course with the goals mounted on the walls. So we're losing a little bit of space there. I know 25 meters, you know, Riley, you spoke earlier, but that was really that ability to add that for training components really provides us the opportunity to have many more polo teams and make the training much more effective. Total revenue cost may be in that $35,000 to $40,000 range. Reduction of operating costs by narrowing this is about $7,700 a year based on the reduction in the total volume and surface area of the pool. So we have a net loss of revenue over the course of the year. But these revenue opportunities, I think, are going to increase greatly. The swimming is growing, water polo is growing, and I think the demand for this kind of facility for events is only going to increase. So looking down the road, there may be more of a revenue impact down the road. It would reduce the competition course from 10 lanes to nine lanes, keeping a legal width, that 2.5 meter or eight feet two inch width, to meet all requirements of every swimming organization in the world in terms of how wide your lanes need to be and their lane widths that maximize training. This also incurs that design fee if it was done separately. If you did this, plus the reduction of the L, this 137 only applies once. So if we did all five options, our total cost would be down to 12.6. The swim committee, yesterday, in looking at all these options, weighing it, looking at the end costs, came out with a recommendation that it was really options one, two, and four, which is why I listed those in that order. Not because I was, I bunked arithmetic in fifth grade. But again, which got us down to that cost of 13.47 million. So these were the ones, one, one, two, and four, that were the recommendations that came out of the swim committee yesterday. And we felt, I've had a chance to review some of these conversations with various stakeholders prior to this meeting. And there was a really comfort level and I think that is something, I hope, that those would have the least impact or the, on the donors. Again, trying to make the most of the money we have. So then taking a look at the next steps. Again, a collective agreement as to where we really want to focus, knowing that we still have some ideas. We need to get the pool design, engineering design, but final decisions on the energy system may not need to be made quite as quickly as the actual body of water scope. Secondly, coordinating the funding sources so that when we come up with that final target, make sure we really understand with South Bay Port Health and Recreation, how their funds are being used, if we can identify some of the specific items that can be purchased. Going back to the comments made by Mrs. Atkinson on behalf of Dave, and thank you for those. Still here somewhere? So these are the kind of things that we can then identify and coordinate that to hopefully make even more of these opportunities. And then significantly, on the subcommittee, confer with Weisburn to really fine tune these scopes of reduction. See if there's an impact on the, with the concessions and what we're thinking about doing there. If they had hoped to use that for the gym, if there's multi-uses. Then take a look at a more in-depth analysis. And as I mentioned earlier, I've had a chance to already do a little bit of research on this. Really figure out the engineering option, code gen versus solar power, which could be electrical needs, pool water heating needs, with the options being code gen, solar shared with school district, separate solar system for pool, or a solar passive system for water heating. And then, of course, with the final option being, do it like the old days and with all of our energy saving technology in the mechanicals, we are just buying our electricity and buying our gas to run the pool. So that's where we are at this point in the process. So again, a few tweaks based on some additions since, and some of the questions you asked that we were able to actually start exploring those last night.
I want to add that while we spoke yesterday, I was very concerned about having access for all for the big pool. I was concerned when we were taking the big L out and asked about senior citizens and people with special needs being able to access it. And you assured us that either of the methods would work just as well and in some cases, better with the elevator.
The ramp is definitely the best option, but it's an expensive option. The, if you don't, the default for virtually every other public pool, certainly in California, is the lift. These new elevators are, I haven't seen any out in California yet, but I'm seeing them in other areas with a high use of that. Usually it's in that Usually it's in that warm water pool, but it's actually an elevator that a wheelchair can go on and it can just lower, it can be more easily operated by the user. It's another $30,000, but again, for what we're talking about, the small, it really provides some great access to it. I don't think Ken has installed one, Archpack, but we have, I reached out to some other engineers and got some feeling for it, and so it's really not that great a challenge, and it may be worth it. But I think with so much of that use, the people that really need the lift or the ramp are using the warm water pool. I think we have great access with the stairs and the elevator in the big pool for even handicap people that are swimming laps, even for those that have a more aggressive need to do what they want to do in the cool water than in the warm water. But I feel pretty confident about that, and I've talked to a couple of other people in the industry this morning that confirmed that.
And could you explain why we're not doing cogen and solar? That the tax incentives or the state doesn't allow them both to be used?
And this, I defer to perhaps Vince Madsen from the school district, because I think one of the things that, when they were studying solar for the overall school system, which solar made much more sense with all the carports and the ability to do solar panels and a solar field, that there were some restrictions on using both on the same site. As of yesterday, I know Vince still hadn't been able to get the clarification. If it could be done, I know the city council is looking into the legal aspects because it's all their land, but if the facilities are divided, could it be viewed as separately so we could still do cogen independently? Those answers we don't have, and Vince, I don't know if you have, if I may ask, any more insight?
No, it's really just the tax.
You can come up, please. And Vince, if you introduce yourself.
Yeah, Vince Madsen, facilities planner for Weisburn Unified School District. The way solar is developed in a public entity, whether it be a city or a school, power purchase agreement is one of those delivery methods. And the investors take advantage of a lot of the tax incentives that come along with building and developing a project that a public entity couldn't take care of. Once you have two energy solutions on the same meter, one of those tax tariffs come off the board, making the development of solar a little bit more challenging if there's not a cash flow issue. The power purchase agreement, that delivery method, really doesn't take any money out of anybody's general fund because it's fully developed and designed with investors using those tax incentives. So really, both of us would then be just deferring our utility bills, paying a fixed rate as Edison rates may increase, you go into peak periods. So it's a long-term savings, but it's how we develop the project that's the challenge. And I'm still trying to get right down to it and be able to determine both or how, and maybe even a separate meter if that's an option, that's additional cost. So we're looking into that.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, while you're up, just curious, what is the life expectancy of a cogen system? And then what do you anticipate utility rates? How have utility rates increased historically over time?
Well, the good thing about cogen is you would be relying on gas to really run that because you're using that for heat. So the way the rates, the more gas you use, your rates go down. Electrically, the more electric you use, the rates go up, which is all those fun peak times that we have to deal with. How we purchase the cogen, there are service agreements that basically, it's a 10-year or 100,000 miles on the motor. They just come in and swap the motor out, and that unit continues to run. There's an additional cost to that, but based on maintenance and staff and who we have that's able to do that. Talked to a couple of school districts that could be 50 years of lifespan if you're changing those motors out.
Yeah, on the utility rates, it's gas through cogen or alternative is electric, right? So my question is more about the electrical rates. I'm just curious, historically, how those rates have increased? I know it's changed.
Yeah, I mean, we've had multiple solar. I mean, they're projecting a 5% increase over the next couple of years. I would say, depending on time slots, 3%, you know, is an average increase. Yeah, what we struggle with, I think both entities struggle with, most of our operations is during that peak time. So as soon as you spend a minute in the peak time, now the whole month's rates are paid at that. So if we could add solar to soften the load to keep us out of the peak rates, that savings over time is huge. So that's really what it is. Solar's not going to take away and get us off the grid, but it gets us out of the peak time, and that's.
Couple more follow-ups on that, some very good questions. When you look at the electrical use of an outdoor pool, in some of the research I did this morning with some of the engineers involved, one of the challenges with solar generating electrical is that the biggest electrical heater of power is the pool pumps, which run 24/7. That is the majority of the electrical use we have. And then we have the outdoor lights, which of course are LED and very energy-efficient, but they're never on during peak hours. So the systems, the pool systems that have tapped into solar have kept their pumps on a separate, straight electrical source because the solar didn't really work very effectively in driving the pumps, particularly when you had the VFDs, the variable frequency drives, because those work better on that steady source of power. And it can help address the fact that we have little peak use, with some peak use, but we have it spread out over the whole 24 hours. So our rates may be a little lower than the school rates that are more peak-driven. So that was some important information that I found very helpful, your trying to look at that. Vince is right, we looked at the longevity, the lifespan of the cogen system. During the length of your contract, you're paying, and it's factored into those financials, you're paying for a maintenance fee to take care of those things. And there is some point at the end of that contract, not really sure, although the systems can last if they keep repeating it, are they going to be upgrading, updating the costs, these things? So in talking with the engineers, with Archpack, who commissioned the engineering study on cogen, we've identified some questions to ask the engineer, as well as the manufacturer, because what I've asked to do is get a sample of what that user agreement looks like. What happened at the end of 10 years? And they say, okay, we've got to put a new system in. Or, yes, we can last it, but we've got to update, we've got to significantly increase your annual operating commitment. I don't know what those look like, but that is one of the things when we near that decision. One more fact that I think we need to take into account that we didn't discuss yesterday. What does that user agreement really look like? I hope that's a little bit more info.
So cogen units, are they gas turbines or like a small packaged gas turbine or what is it?
They are gas-driven that operates actually a V8 motor, an engine.
Okay, so it's not a turbine, it's a?
No, that then turns the armrests that generate the electricity.
So who maintains that and operates that on a day-to-day basis?
That's part of the service agreement with their company, the manufacturer that supplies it. And there is a certain, I think, and what you do is you have, I circulated to Meredith the engineering studies, a summary, and then the big engineering study for those, and I think they're being uploaded to the shared drive. You can actually see the documents in their calculations. But essentially, ironically, using this, the overall amount of gas you would use in the pool goes up 10%, but that's the least costly of our energy systems. But it would have a significant decrease in the amount of electrical. And then they factor in that monthly maintenance cost or annual maintenance cost that's linked to the capacity, kilowatts of the actual cogen system. And we've targeted the 70, not we, the engineers that developed this, or Archpack have developed 75 watt as the prime target. Hopefully those engineering details will be uploaded.
Just one more question. I know Tesla and others are working on capacitors in home, power walls, et cetera. Is there anything like that where we can store excess capacity or are the utilities prevent us from doing that?
I'll answer that question in two ways. They haven't been applied to systems in the pool yet. One of the things that came up, and the city director of public works made a good comment, that, you know, if we're talking about a payback period out to 10, 12, 13 years, the technology is going to look so different going forward that we might be looking to change anyway. So these are things that are all in the works, and I know that there's going to be updates continually. Again, I'm not an energy engineer, so I can't give you a timeline on those, but right now, they're not being applied. The ability to store some of that energy in a way that could help us better maintain the 24-hour operation of the pumps for both pools, not quite there yet. So again, don't have a good answer yet, except to say, things are changing rapidly.
Final question on cogen. Did the analysis look at huge fluctuations in oil prices and gas? Is there, I mean, if we had another crisis, fuel crisis, is that?
No, they use basically today's cost to figure that out. And then what I did was, just in the financial model, I've used that same 3%. I've built in escalation for all of your key costs, electrical, gas. And in talking with the committee yesterday, there's some speculation your gas may not even increase that much. So we may be in the overall perspective. But again, what can change in a hurry? Can't tell you.
And hate to harp on the cogen side of it, but what's the reliability of this? You're going to put an internal combustion piston-driven engine out there that's going to be running for 24 hours a day for 10 years? That doesn't really happen in the real world. And there's not an operator or somebody standing by with it? So you've got shutdown systems, when it shuts down, what happens and how do you?
I asked the engineers that. And I haven't asked the consultant that did it or the manufacturer. But some answers I got this morning were that the service agreement does get people out there right away to replace the engine or, you know, do the oil change. That's part of the agreement. But in doing that, they also mentioned that they anticipate about a peak downtime every year in that maintenance, which concerned me because we've got a pretty year-round aquatic program here. And particularly because you can't plan ahead for that. It's not like you can say every third week in August before the school year starts, we know, green seasons. So again, these are answers, and we clearly identified yesterday that we don't have all the answers on the cogen. But I think we found the people, they asked about that service agreement, and we've identified, I think it was two or three sites in Southern California that are using the system for an overall school district that can give us some real hands-on knowledge of what the realities are and not just what the manufacturer is telling the engineer. I wish I could be more specific.
So when the cogen goes offline, we go on the grid for power?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, because you really need it, go on the grid.
You need a backup, there's no doubt about that, but.
And you never, the cogen in the hot water it heats will never entirely heat your pool. So you've got a heater. It just may be a little lower capacity, but it will service your needs in any downtime. So you're not, I don't think, I mentioned downtime. The pools that have done that have taken advantage of that to do some other maintenance, but I don't think you really need to be downwater if you manage it correctly. And again, I think the ability to tap into some facilities that are currently using it would be very important.
So as Stu alluded to, though we did not, the subcommittee did not elect to go with eliminating cogen, there's a lot of open questions with cogen. And there needs to be a lot of work done looking at the solar options. As Stu pointed out, there's a couple of options we have. And so though we, I think that money really just needs to be put in a parking lot with an anticipation that it may not be used for cogen, but could be used for something else. You know, buying, you know, going out, contracting with someone to put the solar panels on the parking. There's a lot of other options. So that definitely needs a lot more research. So that's why we tabled that one.
So your point is that that money we've set aside in the budget, which is almost 400,000?
Correct.
That could go into the overall project right now to get things moving. And if we find we need to spend it on cogen or solar, that's great. If we decide none of those is really a cost-effective option, that can go back into the pool reserve fund.
Right, and then I've asked Stu and Meredith to actually have something prepared to talk about the cogen within, in a month. So hopefully we'll have more definitive information.
And my first reaction is if the numbers are even close to accurate, 36,000 savings absolutely makes sense from an ROI standpoint if it really costs 420,000. So you're not going to get that kind of return conservatively for a city anyway. But I would like to know more about it because I have some of the same questions that Mike has.
It's going to take about 15 years to pay back that, to recoup that money. And then so we need to know how long the cogen will actually function because if the lifecycle is actually post 15 years, then it's worthwhile. But if it's not, then, and how much money do we have to put into maintenance to get that money back?
And if the user agreements go out that far? Because if you've only got a 10-year user agreement and they got you, who knows what it might look like in year 11? As the system is aging and they say, well, it's going to cost us a lot more to maintain. Any other comments, questions?
Dr. Brand?
Talk about something different. Why were the diving boards put in, in the first place, if nobody supports them?
It was when the wish list was being created. It was something that was not really driven by the competitive needs. It was viewed as a great, fun recreational activity that might be just one more recreational activity for the general open times on the weekends or the kids might want to play with, play on July 4th. It was just an added recreational benefit. Now, there are a lot of opportunities for additional recreational facilities that we haven't really, that would really be part of overall aquatic recreational programming. Because with this facility, I think the aquatic programs in all the pools in El Segundo are going to increase because you're going to have a lot of opportunities. So there was really never any competitive or programming need for the boards. It was a luxury, and that's why it was on the top of the list when we looked at those reduction options. Meredith, any other comments from the recreational point of view on that? And we do have the boards, of course, the board at the plunge.
That's what I was going to add, is we do have a diving board at the plunge. It's definitely popular during rec swim, birthday parties and things like that. And just to make note that we're not eliminating the deep water, the diving well necessarily, so diving boards could potentially be added later.
What's interesting is that there was revenue projected in programs and community programs for the deep water, but didn't relate to diving. It was scuba classes. We need that kind of water to train our lifeguard. So the deep water actually generates some revenue even without the diving boards. So I consider that as the deep water well of the pool and not the diving well.
And I want to say, I was one of the people who requested diving boards because I thought it gave all the students more options competitively. But then I was told that with Stu's surveys, that there was no interest.
I remember the diving board at the plunge really distinctly to this day because I was down there with my dad to watch my oldest daughter take swim lessons with a longtime swim instructor here, Pete Wayland from Rexon Park. And for about the 10th time in the month, she went up the ladder for the high dive. And I told my dad, she's going to turn around and come back down. It just looks too scary to her up there. And she jumped off, and that's one of the most shocked I've ever been in my life. That was really a surprise that she came off of there. We were just shocked. What about these stairs now in the large pool? What are they like?
Well, there's, and I'll differentiate the terminology for steps. Around the whole 50-meter, there are eight recessed steps, which are ladders just built in to the pool. When you get into the L, it truly is a step-down, regular steps. They're not ladders like you have at the plunge, they're not recessed. It is truly a very gradual set of stairs.
Okay.
Yeah, so very easy.
And that's in the L?
Surface on that skid surface.
That's in the L?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, how could this facility serve as a venue for the Los Angeles 2024 Olympics, or could it? What would be the pluses in doing that versus the minuses?
There is, very good question. There is no doubt that when the Olympics and looking at the LA 24 bid, there are significant use of existing 50-meter pools in the proximity to the different event sites. And that, of course, would be the event site by the Coliseum.
USC.
USC. There's an event site in Long Beach. Most of the aquatics is centered at USC like it was last time, but there is some other aquatic venues in Long Beach. This, and because of the UCLA and USC dorms being the central focus of the villages, there is some use that this pool would be put to for training in two ways. There is never enough pool training space for synchro, for water polo, for swimming during Olympic games, particularly for the teams that want to get away. Particularly for the teams that want to get away from the cameras. So there would be use and it's, will be up to the city to say, hey, we want to be part of that. Or I can't give up that time. But since it's August, most of the seasons are over by then. So it might be a great opportunity. The other opportunity is that there are going to be considerable teams coming in to train in advance of the Olympics in the LA area the year before or to acclimate and even coming in a couple of weeks before the Olympic pools are open. So there may be opportunities for additional training, particularly for water polo and swimming with a pool that's just close to some of the venues. Because most of the pools we've got tend to be in Orange County or further out. We might be in a pretty good position to generate some use. But again, that would be up to the city to see how deep you want to get into it.
For a preliminary event, uh, there wouldn't be sufficient seating there to accommodate that, would there?
There really wouldn't. When you talk about a preliminary event, the Olympics have what they call test event. And the whole goal is that as much as possible, they want to host an event prior to the Olympics in the actual venue. So USA Swimming, if LA gets the bid, would host their Olympic trials in the Olympic pool. There is likely that, probably not a great likelihood that we would get any Olympic related pre events in this facility.
If, if we.
Could be a water polo event. But speculation. USA Water Polo is really doing their best to create their own national training center somewhere in California. They're looking at some partnering options. So they may have a venue by 2024. I'm sure they will, that they'll probably prefer.
Well, it'd be kind of fitting to have something related here since El Segundo is very well known historically as a, a water polo swimming place. I had the opportunity to teach at the same time Earl Sari was finishing up his career. The great things that happened around the Olympics when he coached there. Is there, is there any possibility that a pool used as a practice pool or training pool? Could, could that access any funding from the profits of 2024? You know, the profits of 1984 were great when Peter Ubaroff ran the Olympics and they sustained local community youth sports for another 20, 25 years. They're just fantastic. It may even still be some going. And I think we would do this equally well, put on a great, a series of events and walk away with a profit. And I was just thinking about accessing some of that profit to put up, pay us back for funding a first class facility without any compromises.
Right. The, the election, the vote on the city is the, on the Olympic venue is next September.
Seventeen.
Seven years out.
Yeah.
I think you'll find that this current bid has very limited construction of new pools. They're really trying to take advantage of it, which is an advantage to get things in this facility. And as that model, there is also an element of their bid that does have that foundation funding from the profits of the Olympics. Now, keep in mind, LA was the only Olympics in the last 50 years that showed any profit. And I don't know if it's showing in the budget. Who knows? Nobody's been able to do it since if there is profit. But I think once they get the bid, it will be very important for city leadership to engage the local organizing committee. Absolutely.
Yeah. Contingencies. I'm assuming the contingencies you, you added on here are lower now than they were a couple of weeks ago when we talked because you've reduced the, the cost. Is that correct?
Well, what we did was we inserted these hard cost savings into the same formula. So the percentage contingency is still the same, but the added to the bottom line.
Right.
Those dollars are lower.
Got it. Thank you.
So that's why we did it that way. And on the shared drive will be the actual worksheets. Let me get those updated probably in probably early next week, we'll have those loaded, which will show you the actual calculations. So right now the contingencies are still 10%. We still have a strong inflation factor in there. So there's a lot of the, the buffer in there that we had discussed at the last meeting.
And 10% contingency is viewed as generous or ample?
It, the contingency was set by the school district and their construction managers. Normally, we started with the 10% a long time ago. And normally as the design gets refined, the contingency drops. But the school district and Vince and the number of projects he's managed for the school district is a firm believer in keeping that up there.
Yeah.
Because when it goes out the bid, he has a perfect record of never, the bids never coming in over budget.
Let's keep him perfect.
That's what we're hoping. That's why the contingency percentage has not been decreased. There, there's really, there's a lot of comfort, I think, in all the parties on the construction side, as long as we continue to do the due diligence we're doing now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, just to summarize then, sorry. The changes you're recommending, one, two, and four, no impact, no impact on programming materially, it sounds like, right?
Correct.
In fact, some improvements with the additional.
Correct. You lose a little bit of money in maybe concession revenue, but I'm not sure it's worth the effort of what you'd have to do to manage it.
Thank you.
So what we're basically doing is we're putting the same size hole in the ground that we had talked about before. Because once you put your hole in the ground, you can't ever expand it. That's what you have. But for some of, especially the, the high school people who are here today, there's a lot of things we're not going to have at the beginning. So if you're expecting a facility that has thermal blankets, lane lines and training blocks, you know, we're.
That's all in the budget.
Yeah, I think that what it was is we were going to buy them directly.
Right, right. But I'm saying, but, but we need sponsors for those. We're looking for.
No, no. It's just we had a savings because we were going direct to buy them rather than buying them through the pool company.
But there's also opportunities for sponsorship.
There is, absolutely.
Right.
But we might not have those at the beginning.
That 13.4 target, really 13.5, I'll round up. That includes timing, scorecard, lane lines, water polo goals. That includes all the equipment.
Right.
It just gives us a chance to save money by purchasing it direct. And it's a more tangible mechanism for the donors to attach their name to something, which can help us increase and hopefully maybe even exceed our donor goals.
Right. But we're looking that they might actually make the direct purchase themselves and then.
It could be, or that funds would be donated and the city purchases directly. Some of those things are below the cutoff for having even to go to bid. I mean, it can be a very clean. And there's, there's more things you could throw in there, the lifeguard chairs, you know, the floating water polo goals. I just tried to take a look at the big chunks that require the, that you get the lane lines and the lifeguards, put them in the pool. Not like we need the pool contractor to ever have his hands on those. But all that is included. And a lot of those you wouldn't have to purchase till three months before the pool is opening. So it's almost a little bit deferred of your capital as opposed to being in that upfront nut with the pool contractor.
Right. So just wanted to do a quick recap of what we're proposing then.
Mm hmm. The proposal was the initial savings were pulling some things out altogether. Diving boards, some of the other equipment, UV system. We've identified some of the cost savings that were just overlaps or some soft costs that could be removed. And these have no impact, doesn't delay the project and really focus on that. That was the first option one, which was accepted. Option two was reviewing the concessions, what we could take out of that. That needs to have a little bit of fine tuning, really clean up that cost and see if there's any added cost for what we want to do with just a blank space and a garage door. And finally recommend narrowing it to the L. Now, again, minimal changes. The L in a, because it's only a small design change, still has the design fee. But I want to caution in talking to Ken, we, we are very confident that that can be done with just an addendum and a quick change with a week turnaround from DSA. So it wouldn't push us back. But that's not a guarantee. There is that little bit of wild card on DSA that could push us back. And we really are trying to avoid the delays.
That's an over the counter?
Pretty confident about that.
You're going to get that over the counter? When you say a, a week turnaround? Is that, that's something you walk in?
That's once you get it to DSA. He felt that he could do a totally redesigned pool, have it resubmitted and ready October 15th in the design. So you could still order the pool from Murtha in time to get the discounts by purchasing it this year, which is 3% on one and a half million.
I don't have a lot of confidence in DSA from my experience, but it is what it is.
And, and we had that very discussion and he shared that it's not a slam dunk. The L could conceivably create some delays, but because it's a small change entered as an addendum or, you know, the final review, they are committed to turning those around in a week theoretically. That's a DSA commitment in writing, but he is much more familiar with that process than I am.
So the project for the school is so unique. Nothing like that's come through DSA before. And I think it was handled specially because it was a one off. Is this pool being handled like the tower is? Or is that just typical DSA processing?
The pool process with help of the school district set up what they're calling a piggyback with DSA. So that the standard elements of the Murtha pools are now all approved.
Yeah.
And with just a price. So we don't really need to go back to Murtha except to say, we've downsized that. We need X number of linear feet less of the panels. We need Y and boom. A day later, we've got the updated pricing and it's all already pre approved in the, the piggyback with DSA. So that's why just that little change, we hope can be very expeditious. But you're right, no guarantees.
Stu, when we repurpose the concessions down, we don't need the outlined storage space anymore that.
Well, I thought there was enough in the concession based on just some of the numbers that were floated in our last meeting. I did get the actual square footage this morning and it's 315 square feet, which really doesn't give us what we need in storage.
Doesn't eliminate the need for the standalone?
It doesn't. We still have that in these budgets. So in the final budgets today, when we talked about that, I did not remove that as an additional saving. I kept it in there. 315 square feet, if it was all stored, it still wouldn't meet the needs. Question?
The committee that met yesterday that produced the recommended reductions, can you let me know who's on that?
It was essentially Mayor Fuentes and Carol Burcha for the city council. And it was then Greg, Meredith, myself and Stephanie.
Okay.
The parts and wreck.
You know, normally, as you can see from the schools that were built in Wiseburn, I'm not a big fan of cutting corners or value engineering. But when, when I put something in the ground, I want it to be the best and to last. And so I'm hesitant to endorse these concessions unless I hear from the main pool proponents that these are things they're okay with. And I didn't hear you say Lee Davis and some of the other people who participated right along. So I'd like to hear about how they feel.
In developing that, I think that's a very good question. And I know from, let's say, Lee Davis, how many times have we talked in the last week?
Two, too many.
About every other day. I even talked to Dave Atkinson this morning. So we've been trying to keep those people in the loop, although they didn't have a seat at the table. So if, if that's appropriate, if they have some, something to add to that. One of the things, you know, we may find that we present these and the donors say, I'll make up the difference. Let's not make any of those cuts because I'm trying to build a pool for the next 50 years. I don't know. And I hope that's the option and, but this was an exercise we needed to do. But that's wishful thinking. But again, and I know Vince and I have talked about that.
I'm, I'm confused. Can we clarify something? A few minutes ago, I asked if summary was that we're not changing any of the potential programming possibilities for the pool. I'm not seeing anything in options one, two, and four that fundamentally changes the functionality of the pool. Is that a correct statement? Lee's not in his head, yes.
Correct. And with programming, I think of that as functionality.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. Some of that was just oversights in the budgeting, school admin costs, et cetera. Direct purchase.
Yep.
I mean, to me, these are all excellent observations that don't impact the school's use now or in the future. Okay.
We didn't want to delay, except for the L, we didn't want to add design costs and we didn't want to change the opportunities. And for those of you that made comments earlier on, I want to stress that we still have the, if we go with this, the 10 full lanes, 20 lane short course yards, we have 25 meter training across the pool. We have the full water polo course. We have two bulkheads. We have all deep water. We have a major scoreboard that is video color capable. We have the timing systems for 20 lanes. We have the ability in the scoreboard and the systems to run two concurrent courses as well as two concurrent water polo games on the full scoreboard. So it's, I think we've got the whole package that was developed from the competitive community right from the start two years ago. Well, much longer than that, but in my tenure.
The only thing that's unrecoverable or irrecoverable is the L. Right?
Correct.
Because once the stairs go in, there's no make it an L.
Yep.
That's it.
That is the whole.
But everything else, the things we're eliminating like diving boards, if there are compelling need 20 years from now, you could add diving, we could add diving boards.
We still have the depth there. We have the concrete that would support it in the deck. That would be an easy addition.
But the L reduction increases seating capacity.
And lane capacity.
It increases, it only increases lane capacity across the pool.
Right.
And what we found is that it would be able, we, we feel that we can increase seating capacity without even reducing the L if we bring the seats down to the deck level. If with the riser, if we increase it, we can extend the riser a little longer, but it's going to be much more costly to do that. There may not be any cost at all with the trade offs to increase seating, the capacity we want on the actual deck level.
So back to Don's point about working with the DSA?
DSA.
DSA. I think it's important, if we decide to move with the, reducing the L, we need you to be, our, our team to be on top of it to ensure if it is going to cause delays, which would cause us a delay in the purchase of the pool, we need to be able to flip back to the longer, the larger, I mean, we need to look at what's the hard cost? If we, you know, I don't want to go with the, the L, the reduction of the L to save cost. And then it turns out and then actually increases cost. So we need to be really paying attention to the timing of that. So I think we, as a, we as a panel, a council need to be on top of that and make sure that there's a contingency plan if we anticipate a delay.
And we did talk to, I did talk to the pool architect to see if he could turn these around, the new drawings that quickly to still meet those needs. And he said it'd be very difficult, but he can do it. Pulled some people off, he can, he can do that. And then, you know, we can get that pool ordered. Again, it's very small changes. None of the, the big stuff changes and I don't see why. But your big design fee change, but that's because he has to do the whole drawing again. But you're right, it's got to, we got to stay on top of that because we don't want delays. And the donors don't want delays. And they may say if there's even a chance, maybe fund it.
And what's the turnaround for the state architect to approve? That.
In talking to Ken Muller.
Change.
With Archpac, he felt that, because DSA has approved it all, he's got to go back on the seating anyway. So the seating wouldn't be an issue because they've got to review that. We can do that in the same breath. On the L, because it's such a small change, that could be just that last step of follow up addendum that would be part of that last DSA process and wouldn't have to start the whole process over again. That he feels pretty strongly that that's the case. But that is something that he cannot guarantee at this point. If that does not come through, it would be a delay of probably two or three more months.
So is that a risk going forward with placing an order for a pool without the DSA approval?
To be honest, the, the issues with the L that the DSA would come back with would not be issues related to the tank itself in the purchase. Ken and I talked about that. We actually got a representative of Murtha on the phone this morning to see if, you know, we could still do that. Because right now, the really goal with Murtha and why they need it upfront is they've got to make sure they've ordered enough steel now in this year's pricing. And so I think they can do that and I think we can work within that timeframe, even if the DSA is delayed a little bit because it won't change the tank. They might just say, you know, make little corrections in how we mount the lift or the elevator or making sure the railing and the stairs is over here instead of over here. You know, it's, they'd be minimal. And Ken has done such a great job and it sailed through DSA. And Ken has done such a great job, and it sailed through DSA and the whole big pool and the teaching pool, that we don't anticipate that. But as you mentioned, Dr. Brandt, there's always a chance with DSA. I'm sure our Wiseburn friends in the room would agree with that.
And for people who are watching or who will read about this, the DSA is the state architect?
Department of State Architect.
Right. Because this is a school property, this just isn't city property or private property. It has to go through another channel to approve all of it.
You notice my hair is gray like yours. Part of that was caused by the DSA's delay on projects, and I don't think things have changed that much.
So do we have concurrence or concerns?
No, I would go with the recommendation of the committee to options one, two, and four, to continue to consider options three and five in the future.
Concurrence? Mike?
Well, the code gen was the only thing I was willing to cut out of this thing, so everything else looks good. The, you know, my, I feel awkward with this, because we're talking about money that the city doesn't have in this deal right now, and I don't know how that's going to shake out. I'm concerned about that more than anything. We've got a, you know, the overall pool costs have escalated, and we've got a commitment from the South Bay Health and Recreation to fundraise $6 million, but I don't know how that comes into a guarantee of payment, or how those things are going to get worked out. So I'm a little uncomfortable committing to anything that's over what we're going to fund without Wiseburn or somebody coming in and guaranteeing something in here. And then, and I'll say this, I mean, you know, this is a, this whole deal has been kind of part of a, an agreement between the city of El Segundo and the Wiseburn School District was to put the pool in as part of a, kind of a concession or a deal to grant the land and do everything else over there. And I'm a little disappointed that as costs are escalating, Wiseburn is kind of insulated from the cost escalation. I don't know if that's part of the original deal or what, but, you know, I would like, you know, Wiseburn to come in with a little bit more on this, too. So, you know, I'm sitting up here making decisions on other people's money, and that's, I don't think I have the right to do that, to be honest with you, but that's why I don't want to cut anything out of it, other than the code gens right now, because everything else is what people are wanting, and that's what we're trying to get. And the question is, who's going to pay for it? That's the question I have. I don't know what we're going to cut out of it, so I don't know.
I see Dr. Tub Johnstone, superintendent of the Wiseburn School District, approaching the podiums. Welcome, sir.
Welcome, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak today. Wiseburn's position is we've committed $6 million, and in addition to that, $3.9 million in land for the project. So we're $9.9 million into the project. We've been talking extensively to Richard Lundquist. He has, has basically guaranteed to our, to our school board that he's going to do the $6 million, so we're at 12. So with the city's $1.8, we're at $13.8. That has approximately a $1.5 million contingency in it. Hopefully, we were very fortunate with our phase one of the project, that we didn't get into the contingency, so we saved $6 million right there. We've been, we've been very, very successful with this project under Vince's guidance. So we're confident at the $13.8, that if the city is on board with their $1.8, that we can accomplish this, and we're full speed ahead. Our, our biggest concern is having delays, because we know that right now, time is money, and we would really like to be able to build this all at the same time and not have to phase anything. Phasing means that you're mobilizing construction crews for a longer time, which is obviously more expensive.
On that phasing, your gym is your second phase.
Yes.
And have you pushed the pool now, because this money hasn't been shored up, at least until now, to a third phase? Are you going to do it, if we can straighten this out, in the second phase with the gym?
We've on paper created a third phase, but it would be our recommendation that we accomplish all this in two phases. And I'm a bit more ambitious than Vince is, but I want to see this thing open for New Year's on 2018.
Better be heated.
We'll be swimming there.
That's, that's what we want.
So Tom, just to be clear, if, if we move forward with, with these reductions, and if we're right on the bids, and, and the total cost is somewhere around $13.5 million, you would be looking for the city to commit $1.5 million before the bids go out?
Yes. And that doesn't mean it has to be locked up in an account with us. It just means that we have to arrange a mechanism similar to what we're going to be doing with South Bay Sports and Recreation, to basically have a line of credit that is guaranteed by the city of El Segundo and by South Bay Sports and Recreation to be able. We fully intend to spend Wiseburn's 4.5, or 6 million, 4.5 of hard costs first, and then the city's, and then South Bay Sports and Recreation. So probably the money wouldn't get spent until next summer, anyway.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Johnstone?
Thank you.
Thank you. So to follow up with what Councilmember Dugan was saying, especially for some of the younger people in the audience, it's a really serious decision to commit millions of dollars. We don't have millions of extra dollars in our city, and sometimes it seems like play money, but it's not, because we have X amount of dollars, and if there's overruns that he's alluding to, then that comes from somewhere else. It comes from another program, it comes from another department, not just recreation and parks, but all the other things we do in town. My background is working for a government contractor, and if it, if the prices exceed a contract, the government cancels it, and then you're just stuck. But we can't do that here. We're not going to leave a hole in the ground at Wiseburn High School. We have to go forward. So we have to have a high level of confidence that we can do this, and we can do it, and from your lips to God's ear, Dr. Johnstone, you know, with $1.5 million less than we are talking about right now, but serious stuff.
So actually, just before we go to a vote, I've been thinking now about the L shape, and I really want to make sure that we have the mechan, we have the, we really have our eye on that ball, and that if it is going to delay the project, that we come back to the council immediately to reassess that. I really do not want to just say, well, that, I don't want it to, I don't want the delay to cost us more money, and I really want to make sure that we have our eye on that ball, and that we, as a council, have that choice to say, well, no, let's go back to the original plan if it's going to, if the, if the change is going to delay us.
Well, that's the risk assessment I was asking about, taking the risk going forward, knowing it might take the DSA four months to approve it.
One thing that may factor into that, too, is that we talked about really doing that energy analysis over the next four weeks. Just what I found out this morning, very quickly, I think we can shorten that time period now. So what would be great is while we're monitoring the, any potential for delay with the L, we have a lot more of the data on the energy systems, so that we can make intelligent decisions there, too, because they may influence each other just as it relates to the total dollars, the project. And trying to follow through on that as quickly as possible.
So with, with the L there, though, you know, just to follow up on that one, the cost of the savings plus the cost of the reengineering there, the delta, but there was only a couple hundred thousand dollars, right? So here we are, looking at the difference between 1.5 and 1.8, when that, the difference between the 1.5 and 1.8 would cover that.
So do we just?
So, well, I'm questioning whether or not that's, you know...
So you say, Stu, you say if we do that, and we keep the L, that if we lower the ramps on the bleachers, there's still potentially is enough room to get two more rows of bleachers there?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, because one of the reasons why I was even, for the elimination of the L was the additional seating. But now you've said that we can get that additional seating without the reduction of the L.
Correct, although it just wouldn't be raised, which...
Right. Yeah, that's no big deal.
And so certainly that eliminates any cause of delays, because the whole pool, except for the seating, was, has been approved by DSA already, and we could certainly meet all our timelines.
And the ramp is the best solution for entry into the pool, you said?
It is.
Superior to the lift or elevator?
Correct.
As we get older, we're going to need that.
Yeah.
And we still...
I'm so glad I live in a house with no steps now.
And the lanes, even with the ramp, the lanes will still have the width of each lane?
We just, yeah, we just lose the...
We lose a couple training lanes across the pool, which just gives us flexibility if water polo's at one end, and there's some width-wise training, but it doesn't change how the pool's normally configured in terms of water polo and swimming and the competition, 25-yard course lanes or the 50-meter course. We're back up to the full 10 lanes of 50-meter, and 20 lanes, 25 yards. That wasn't impacted by the L. Just a few lanes for practice across, four lanes across.
And the aquatics community is okay with that, because that was the initial plan?
Correct.
Correct.
I'm seeing affirmation from the member of the aquatics community.
I'm struggling. Can I, help me understand this one, Lee, or, so we're giving up lanes for accessibility?
No.
I thought I heard you say we're giving up availability to...
There's the ability, in the rare occasion when we're going across the pool for training, which doesn't happen very often, and usually that is when water polo's in part of the pool, but we have enough space that how we use the pool, where we put the groups, we have, still we have 14 lanes going across the pool with the big L. It's the ability to have an extra three or four lanes across the pool in that rare configuration. Doesn't, for the normal use of the high schools, we're configured lengthwise, so we don't lose any lanes in high school training, competition. It was just that added flexibility for lap lanes across the pool, which won't be set up very often in that.
And explain to us what you, or explain to everyone what you explained to us, if we kept the big L, to have two water polo games concurrent, that, how the goals are set up?
Well, you, changing the size of the L doesn't really make much difference in that, because you're still, if you have a water polo goal backing up to the L, it's going to be a floating goal, to be centered, even with a smaller L. So you really have that flexibility. You just make sure that we have in the budget water polo nets that take the balls, because we don't want, if they are going width-wise in that portion of the pool, when your main competition course has shifted more toward the non-L part, we have in the budget nets that go up, so we don't have balls flying into the teaching pool. But that, and that's in the budget, assuming, you know, we have relatively accurate tutors in this group.
Okay. So do I hear now that one and two, option one, option two, keep option four?
Yeah. I think concessions can be revisited. Doesn't seem like it really has any major net benefit, frankly, and there's some health code, some hurdles, so, yeah, I would be in favor of options one and two after hearing about the L.
And then option... Then option four is also on the, we have further discussion once we get some information back from Stu as far as the solar. So option four is not a, or three, excuse me, is not a done issue, it's just, it's pending.
Okay.
I'd cut three out first.
Well, and that may happen.
Yeah.
So, so we're just giving direction, we're not taking a vote, we're saying...
I think there's consensus, from what I'm hearing, to the subcommittee to go back and work with Wiseburn to reduce the scope, to remove options one and two.
Yes.
Mark, do you feel the need to vote on it?
I have a record of that.
Okay. Be nice to have a motion and a vote to report that.
I move that we go with staff's recommendation, or consultants' recommendation of option one reductions, and option two reductions, and consider option three and five for the future if necessary. Sorry, scratched that. I move that we go with option one and option two reductions, with the possibility of reconsidering options three and four in the future.
Four or five?
Only four.
We need a scorecard.
No, no. The four is the...
We're just options, options one and two will be...
Right, the four is the L.
Everything else is a...
Four is reducing or eliminating, reducing the size of the L and eliminating the ramp.
What I heard Drew say was just going to do options one and two, right?
Okay.
That's what I heard him say.
Ten, one and two?
That's what I heard.
I'll second it.
Okay.
And then, just to that, to fully commit up to the 1.8 million?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that 1.8 will still cover, by taking, by not doing option three, we, we still will be able to make the budget with one, with the 1.8, correct? Meredith's saying yes.
Yep.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. All right. It was very exciting to have everybody here today. We meet the first and third Tuesdays of every month, so we're looking to see the same engaged. And we are not returning to closed session, correct? So adjourned? Adjourned? We adjourned, 3:01.